It has to be done, and we did not have a choice in matter. So, uh, thank you for your forbearance. Give me just a minute to, uh, pull my files back together here. On we will go. All right. Next on our agenda is agenda adjustments, if any.
Yeah, the only thing I have is we're going to discuss FY21 again. We talked last month, and it's, it was the, I would say, the consensus of the board that they wanted to look at the facilities and the funds. So tonight, I'm gonna go over that a little bit. I talked to Kelly further. And my only piece would be if you wanted to, um, under, add something, deliberations after we talk, just kind of, you know, directing the board, the administration which way you'd like us to go. Uh, but I think it'll become clearer after I, I walk you through the finances.
Is this under discussion or do we?
Uh, it may be under deliberations, or you may decide to take, not do it. I just didn't want to surprise.
Thank you. Any correspondence, et cetera?
Yes, I'm just gonna read it. It came to, uh, the board chair and myself. Uh, it's just the official letter from the Hollis Education Association of their intent to bargain. So it said, "Dear Ms. Farid, this is to inform you that the Hollis Education Association decides to bargain a master contract for the school year 2223. This notification is in accordance with the requirement of RSA 273-a colon 3." And that came from Sandy Van Skiver, the Hollis Education Association. Uh, that is just the formal start to the negotiation progress, process that we'd like to, uh, make known in the minutes.
Great. Then we will talk about bargain, who will be assigned to which team at it, uh, probably next month, maybe a little later, uh, not tonight. Any other resignations, nominations?
Uh, yes.
Come on.
I have, let me grab those. Getting old. First, I have a, uh, retirement.
Oh.
Uh, please just accept this letter as my notice of intent to retire at the close of the 2021 school year. I have been fortunate to have worked in the best school district in the state and will cherish this experience. My husband and I made the decision to move to Hollis 28 years ago when our two sons began their school careers. The education they received in SAU 41 schools led to their success in life. As a member of the Hollis Primary School Team for over 25 years, I am grateful for the professional opportunities I've experienced. I have been blessed along my journey with the support of my colleagues and families, who are now special friends. While I will miss Hollis, and especially the students at HPS, I am looking forward to the next chapter of my life. My husband and I began the process of moving closer to our sons and our precious grandson this year, and plan to continue our relocation to Cape Cod next year. Please know that Hollis will hold a special place in my heart forever. I will be happy to help with any transition of new staff, and ask that you do not hesitate to let me know how I can be of service to the Hollis School District in the future. And, uh, regretfully, that came from Brenda Golia. So I have, I need a motion.
I need a motion to accept the resignation, uh, Brenda.
Retirement.
Uh, sorry, the retire, I beg your pardon, retirement of Brenda Golia.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
And I have, uh, two resignations. Effective June 30th, 2021, I will be resigning my position as a pre-K teacher at Hollis Primary School. I will complete the remainder of the school year in my contract and resign after it is completed. I am grateful for the opportunity to be part of a fantastic educational community, and will miss my colleagues and students I have met while teaching at HPS. And that is from Aleah Markatus.
All right. Uh, motion, please, to accept resignation.
Moved.
Carol? Amy? All in favor? Five votes.
And finally, after much consideration, I have decided to not renew my contract this year. The decision to resign my current position has not come easily, as I ca- care immensely about the students and families, as well as the staff I work closely with. After much soul searching, I feel that it is time for a change. I would like to thank you all for your support over the years. Your hard work, long hours, and interest in doing what is best for our students goes above and beyond. All the best, and that's Tina Langley, uh, the Early Childhood Special Educator.
Oh, another great loss. All right, we'll take a motion to accept resignation of Tina Langley.
I won't say it.
All right, regretfully, regretfully.
Yep.
Second, please? I need a second.
Second.
Um, thank you. All in favor, regretfully? These are painful losses to the district, and we wish them well.
Uh, that takes care of that section.
Excellent, all right.
I was like, please, no more.
Exactly, exactly. So, uh, we have now on our agenda approval of minutes.
Uh, okay, the, uh, Hollis School Board Organizational Meeting, April 7th, 2021. The following amendments were offered. Page five, line one, replace "has" with "have." Page nine, line 20, insert "who" before "informed." Page 13, line five, replace "devise" with "device." Page 13, line 16, insert "if" before "there." Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
All in favor? You, 500. All right, very good. And I think that's all the minutes that we have, yes. Our next agenda item is committee appointments, and, uh, our format has always been in the form of a letter, which I've written, which I'd like to read into the record, and then we will have discussion and approval of recommended assignments. Dear members of the Hollis School Board and Superintendent Corey, in accordance with Hollis School Board Policies, BBAA, School Board Member Authority, BDE Committees and Delegates, and BDF Advisory Committees to the Board, I am submitting the following appointments for Board Consideration and Approval. Upon approval, the individuals in these roles will be empowered to carry out their respective functions in the best interest of our school district as assigned agents of the Hollis School Board. Uh, Amy Kellner, Hollis School District Representative to SAU 41 Governing Board Policy Committee, also Hollis School District Representative Alternate to the Hollis Budget Committee, signing of the Hollis School District Manifest, and Hollis School District Representative to RSEC, which is the Regional Services Education Center. Brooke Arthur, Hollis School District Policy Committee, and signer of the Hollis School District Manifest. Carol Roy, Hollis School District Representative to the Hollis Budget Committee, and Hollis School District Representative to SAU 41 Governing Board Budget Subcommittee. Myself, Tammy Farid, Hollis School Board Representative to H-Smart. And Rob Mann, Special Project, For Lund Lane Lease Study, Specific Goals and Work Products to Be Defined by the Hollis School Board in the Near Future. Sincere thanks to each member for your commitment to the Hollis community as you fulfill these critical roles and responsibilities. Respectfully, Tammy Farid. Discussion. First of all, do you all accept, does each of you accept the, uh, nomination I've made? Robert, are you comfortable with the language that I used for the time being?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Are we good? Anybody want to throw mud at anyone?
Thank you, Tammy.
Very well, so if we could have a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Perfect, 500, and appreciate very much everyone's, uh, uh, hard work on the board. And as I said earlier, we will be talking about, uh, assignments to the collective bargaining teams for the two contracts a little later, uh, next month probably. So next on our agenda, what are we doing next? I've lost track. We're scheduling a special meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to, more so for the public, the board is aware, will be May 11th, uh, which is next week, to, uh, conduct a workshop. That workshop is, the focus is the diversity, equity, and inclusion work. And basically, it'll be, start with me giving you a summary of what the committee work was and, and how we arrived at where we did. And it's kind of the formal process of turning that work over to the board, because each of the boards, Hollis, Brookline, and the Co-op now takes that over and decides what's appropriate for their specific district. Uh, so we're scheduling, uh, usual start time, and about a two-hour window is what the board had talked about. Um, and at the board's request, we are not, um, doing public input that night. It's a, it's a, uh, a process to catch the board up, and then that most likely will become part of our regular agendas as we move forward, depending on what the, the chair and the assistant chair decide.
I've got a piece of paper here, just hold on two seconds. We had so much paperwork earlier. I wanted to, look over some notes. All right, all right, yeah, you touched on everything, Andy, thank you.
Okay.
Any discussion on this matter? Are you all comfortable with this? Great, terrific. So next on our agenda is public input. And, uh, again, terribly sorry it's so late. So if you could please step up to the podium, clearly state your name and your Hollis, uh, address.
Good evening, my name is Alina Korsek. I live at 168 Hayden Road, Hollis, New Hampshire. And I lived in Hollis for 21 years. I have a child that currently attends Hollis Primary School, and I'm here as a concerned parent, speaking on behalf of all concerned parents about the mask mandate. The mask mandate on our children is unreasonable. We just have to use the common sense and science to just see that the children are running around, and their mask is restricting the oxygen flow to their brains, which are still developing. They're inhaling back the carbon dioxide, they're exhale, exhaling. And I just urge that the school board works hard with the school administration, and all the parties involved that influence this decision or affect this decision, that you work hard together to put an end to this unreasonable mandate now. Uh, the time is not September, the time is now. Uh, we had enough of this unreasonable mandate, and we also live in America, and we also live in New Hampshire, the live free or die state. So, let's act like it, let's work hard on removing this unreasonable mandate, and, you know, let's protect our children, our freedoms, our future. We should not be infringing on the liberties of our people. And the governor had the wisdom, uh, effective April 16, 2021, to have the local organizations make that decision. So I think we should take advantage and work hard to end this mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other public comment, Drew? Are you, do you intend to make any public comments? All right. All right. Could you spell your last name, is it K-O-R?
K-O-R-S-A-K.
S-A-K, thank you. All right. Next on our, uh, agenda is the principal's report.
Yes, I'm gonna, once again, thank Candy and Paula for all their efforts, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. They provided you with an in-depth report. But I do want you to know that, uh, we are hoping that the governor will be visiting to, uh, kind of finalize the spider bill, because as you know, uh, students did a great job. So, they're working on dates to see if this can happen here.
Awesome.
Um, I wanted the board to be aware that plans are underway for a live promotion ceremony up at Hughes. Uh, we intend to do it, uh, outdoors and all the precautions, but we really think this would be a nice way for our sixth graders to end the year. Uh, and we'll be working with, uh, both our in-person and remote students to offer opportunities, engage comfort levels, and try to make everybody feel included. And we are working on our plans for the transition of our third to fourth graders, because that obviously is a very big issue whenever you're leaving, uh, one building. Uh, enrollment holds steady, uh, classes go well, and, uh, I think today, uh, leaves us with 32 days for the school year. And again, for those parents who maybe haven't got the word, we will be ending on Friday, uh, June 18th, which will be the half a day, which is our traditional half a day that we've had all year. Um, and then we'll be moving forward with, uh, teachers and staff to do some professional development opportunities as they finish out the year.
Can I ask a question about the enrollment breakout?
Can you?
Can you not hear me? Can I ask a question about the enrollment breakout?
Yep.
Um, I, I know we heard tonight that the, um, remote section in grade five is, um, holding steady at 23, but now they're, they are down to one teacher? Is that correct?
They are down to one, one teacher?
Do they have one or two teachers in that remote section?
They had two full teachers. We required, um, a support personnel if it was over 25. Um, we were, we kept that second teacher in, um, but circumstances in the school have required that we remove Karen Kelly from that class and place her in another classroom, until we're still in compliance with the one teacher and 23 students in remote.
23 students?
Yeah.
Okay, and, but it's, uh, it, that classroom is also like a pivot for students that need to be remote temporarily?
So all of our students who are quarantined due to exposure, um, who are in-person students, pivot to our remote class for that quarantine period if they so choose.
Uh-huh.
So that is the, the case for all of our remote sections, yes.
Okay.
So in the event, uh, in fifth grade, if they have to pivot and it goes above 25, is a teacher added back in? I think that's where you're going.
No, okay, so let me, so.
Yes, thank you, Carol.
Okay. So, um, a class wouldn't pivot, but if individual students, so let's say three individual students needed to do that, and this is all part of the MOI, what happens is those three participate in the Zoom instruction, but then do their coursework for their homeroom teacher that they've always had the entire year. They don't actually switch teachers, it's just the instructor is different.
So it's an assignment number, is the question of how many teachers need to be there?
Yeah, so the, so there's an extra person watching the lesson, but there isn't, that teacher's not responsible for now 26, you know, tests to grade and such, because those students would take the test with their in-person teacher, even if they let, did it remotely. If that makes sense?
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any, I don't think we have any kids right now, do we? That are, uh, in quarantine?
So we have, um, students in quarantine across all the buildings, based on potential siblings, parents, you know, uh, number, exposure outside of our schools.
Well, the notices that you sent out about positive students in the building, it's not necessarily how many kids are being quarantined, because some kids are being quarantined for reasons outside of their own positive tests.
That is the most common cause, yeah.
Okay, so we have a lot more quarantine kids than we see in the emails.
Yes.
It's important to note, so thank you for those questions.
We identify when we place students in quarantine. That does not mean that they're the only students who are in quarantine.
I really had not conceived of that properly, so those are good questions. Uh, are, is there a para in that fifth grade remote class?
Um, so there is not a para, assigned as a classroom para. There potentially is a para working with a student based on
Potentially, right.
Um, individual student needs, but the 20, if you recall, the 23 is board spec for, for grade five. So this is no diff, I mean, it happens to be larger than the in-person sections, but that's well within the, um, you know, board's, board policy, yeah.
Policy specs, yeah. All right, uh, and again, I want to ask this question again, because I'm thick. We offered in-person education to all of these students. There is, they're not on a waitlist.
That, we do not have waitlists, and any student who is remote has the opportunity to return. Um, they just have to reach out to the building principal so we can make arrangements. Certainly, we have to do things such as find a desk, measure them, make sure that, you know, the, all of our health and safety protocols can be maintained, and, and then, you know.
But again, these 23 or however many there are, they're all there by choice, not because we are, uh, restricting their entrance.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, I just am, um, still noting that in that grade five section is mu, is much larger than all the other remote sections. Um, and, um, but I hear you that even though we needed to move Mrs. Kelly, that we're, we're serving the population well.
Yes, and so, uh, you know, originally, um, September 23rd, that class had 30 students in it, and, um, the, the teachers, we, we could have assigned a support personnel, but instead, we assigned two full-time teachers to co-teach the 30 students. Um, and then it dropped below the 25, and we maintained that status, until we, there was a necessity to make a change, and that change occurred Monday.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
The change occurred just recent, as recently as this Monday.
Right, okay.
So, there was a, an issue that, that necessitated a change, which we put into place. So, uh, there's a lot of dynamic decisions that are being made as information comes to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, I also, can I just add to that? The other sections that are remote seem smaller, but that's because so many students have transitioned back to the school.
Exactly, yeah.
So if you recall, those were large, too large, a little small, you know, when we had all those conversations in August, but we've just brought so many students back. Collapsed sections of, you know, sections that were formerly a remote, let's say we had two grade three sections, then we collapsed them and said we have one grade three remote, and then all the other students return. So we've made a lot of changes every week.
I guess, I, I guess, if I'm, I'm not necessarily saying it the right way, we, we as a board don't need to support in any way, um, that situation as it's unfolding in, in fifth grade. Is, I guess was really my question.
No, I think that the 23 students in the one class is completely in line with district policy, and is very manageable.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My question, if no one else has anything to ask, is, are we seeing students return to the building who had elected to homeschool expressly because of COVID?
Homeschool or remote learn?
Homeschool. I know that a number of people, I just know just generally, I don't know anything specific. The number of families chose homeschooling this year rather than remote or in-person, who might reasonably be expected to return to the building in the fall if, if conditions, uh, suit them. Um, and I, you know, I would like to think ahead as to what we think might be, ha, expect to happen with that population, if you have any ability to talk about that.
You know, we have, we have numbers, and our thoughts are to plan for their return, but they might choose to stay homeschooled. There have been a handful of students who've returned from homeschooling, but the vast majority of our homeschool students have remained homeschool for the, for the year, for whatever reasons
Right, sure.
that, that they've made the, the decision originally. Um, so our plan is to acknowledge that they are in district and they will likely return.
Okay.
And if they don't, um, you know.
We'll have to adjust that.
Yes.
Because, uh, you know, there, I see the classroom numbers, and for these words to come out of my mouth is very strange, but, um, there are some spots where we're high, you know, we've got a lot of kids in some spots where we don't, and, um, it'll be interesting to see how we'll have to plan in the fall, or for the fall, uh, based on some of our enrollment things.
No, absolutely, if you look at our grade two section, um, as it is, moving those students to grade three with a policy size of 20, um, that's a large class.
Yeah.
And then if the high number of, um, homeschool students return, then we will absolutely need to address that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, folks?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify one more thing, that I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that my questions were not at all, um, suggesting that, uh, that, that teacher wasn't doing an adequate job, because I've actually heard absolutely the opposite, that he is, anyone that has commented on his, um, job this year has said amazing things about him, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Absolutely, thank you.
If we're done, we'll move on to the discussion around, uh, our.
I'm sorry if I missed it, I have a blank, there's the gentleman that we're talking about.
We had, yes, we did talk about it, Drew. Um, we talked about we're planning to have a unique meeting, May 11th.
Just a regular board meeting, though, Drew.
Regular board meeting, which we're labeling a workshop. We are pla, intend not to accommodate public comment, and our intention is to wrestle with the questions of, surrounding the topic of DEI. So it's a single-item agenda, it's really not for deliberation, it's more of a matter of the board has yet to have a chance. We're like the last ones allowed to wrestle with it.
Okay, I, I, yes, I misunderstood, I thought we were getting ready to schedule a special district meeting.
Oh, not at all, no, 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 I'm so sorry, I don't know where you got that impression.
I'm sorry, Drew.
That's right.
It's very nice to see you, I know we haven't seen you in a long time.
Yeah, it's been almost two weeks. And hey, there's another opportunity two weeks from now.
That's right.
Featuring the vocal talents of our very own Kelly.
Oh, hey, thanks.
All right, well, when you get around to actually scheduling a district meeting, let me know.
You? I thought we were trying to find
We've got him for now.
Thank you, Drew, sorry about that, gee.
Thanks, Drew.
No problem, I enjoy watching you, too, honestly, you're a good reporter.
All right, so under our discussion, uh, on the agenda, first starts with FY21, and Andy, I think you were alluding to that?
Yes. What I wanted to do, uh, after last month, uh, I went back and I talked to Kelly. The actual report in your packet, um, is updated slightly, but overall, it's pretty much similar, but I wanted to get Kelly's perspective on where she felt we were at. So, right now, she's protecting, projecting an unreserved fund balance of $777,314, which she said, uh, in talking with her today, uh, as you know, Kelly is always very conservative. So she believes that this could likely continue to grow. The question the board had was about really funding Air Handling III. So from that 770, 777, 314, we have the following obligations, the maintenance trust of 120, the building trust of 23, 970, and the sped trust of 25,000. Um, and what we did this year for the retained fund balance was 284,000. So that means the total reductions would be 452,970, or would be returning 324,344, um, to the taxpayers. So I went back and I asked Kelly, kind of, first of all, what was her comfort level if we went to move forward with Air Handling III? And she feels confident about that, and let me explain a little bit of her rationale. Uh, we recently received the rebate check for our lights that goes back into H-Smart. So, uh, from Eversource, we received, uh, a little over $99,000. So that would be one-third of that air source, the air handler.
But that 99,000 is not in this 324 figure?
No, it's not in this because it's H-Smart.
Right.
So that's, and that was not budgeted in H-Smart because it was a rebate for the lights. Okay? We traditionally have not kept a retained fund balance that high. We did that this year based on COVID. So, if you wanted to move back down towards your traditional balance of around 184, something like that, I think, you know, again, talking with Kelly, we feel confident we have everything in place unless something cha, changed drastically for COVID, and it would have to be significant at this point. So, if you just went back down and, and held a required public hearing, uh, you could allocate, uh, another $100,000 to the air source heat pump. And based on my conversations with, with Kelly, um, she feels very confident that we'll make up, uh, a significant amount of that last 100,000, or simply decide to return only 224 instead of 324. And 224 is in the ballpark of what we traditionally return. That we can encumber the money, uh, because what would, that's what she would do. She would encumber it because it's going to take a while, because, um, if you've ordered any type of appliance or anything lately, it's, it's a significant wait time. But by encumbering this money, uh, it would be sitting there, uh, we could move forward with the order, uh, and move forward with Air Handling III. And that's what I was saying regarding potential deliverative item. If you wanted, you could direct the administration, and I would direct Kelly, to encumber that money. Now, by encumbering it, doesn't mean that you have to spend it at this point. Okay? It just, it's really more that, that's your intentions of board, that's what you want to do. It tells the auditors that, so it doesn't look like we're just spending it. Uh, but at the same time, if something went drastically wrong, or we were off in projections in May or June, you could decide not to do that. So it's kind of, we make the official piece that if it's there, this is something we want to do. If something changes, we, the administration, would come back and change our recommendation to do that. But based on Kelly's piece, I, I don't see that. I really don't. Uh, historically, in my seven years of working with her, uh, I haven't seen our balance come in lower than what projected. So, again, when we get to deliberations, if you wanted to add that and encumber $300,000, that's where we would get it. We would get, uh, 99,000 from the rebates. We would get 100,000 from less retained fund balance. And then we would, uh, take 100,000 out of the budget surplus right now, and be at 224, and I think that 224 would grow back. And then, uh, the air handling unit, uh, would be able to be done. It probably would be more of like an October installation, believe it or not. But it can be done when school is going. Uh, it's totally outside work, it does involve a crane, so it would probably be one of those Friday afternoon deliveries, put it up over the weekend, and reopen on Monday. And I'll take any questions you make.
Are there opportunities to get hard quotes on that number? So, or would we need to provide an up to number? So we can ensure that, from a practical standpoint, that the money is there and we can procure at the price that we're looking to procure at?
Right. If the board told me to move forward, I would go back to Ekman, who's our contractor for H-Smart, and tell them that you want to put it out to bid. The initial estimate that Ekman gave us, working with John Penny, who's our HVAC expert, was right around 309,000. So, I mean, encumbering the 300,000, I'm, I'm not really worried about finding 9,000 in the FY, the next budget. Okay? But I could definitely, if, if that's the motion we take tonight, move forward, I would tell Ekman that I need a, you know, a concrete number. Because if all of a sudden it's four, that's a whole different ballgame. And you, as a board, might say, well, for four, we'll wait, you know? So that's where we stand. And I do want to thank Kelly, because she puts some quality time into making sure that she felt really comfortable with this. And it kind of leads me into H-Smart, if it's okay with the chair. As you know, we've been meeting monthly. And we have recently finalized the work around the sprinkler system. So that will be the first project, because that's the one where it kind of has the critical timeline to be able to open. And that sprinkler system also is paired with a new fire panel. So there's going to be a lot of significant upgrades around that. We did receive word that we were able to go from a 30,000 gallon tank to a 15,000 gallon tank. So that was a nice change in our favor, from both a budgetary standpoint and just the scope and size. But to give you an idea how costs are escalating, I mean, a piece of sheet, not sheet rock.
Plywood.
Plywood, thank you, Timmy, has gone from about 30 something dollars to 66 dollars.
Since January.
So building a little tiny shed to sit on top of the pump house went from about 3,000 or 4,000 to almost 10,000. So the cost escalation is there. But I, you know, we have a wonderful crew, and Timmy's on the call pretty much every week. And Dick Henry, who's our energy consultant, Dave Ely, who's our architect, and John Penny, who's our HVAC expert. And then we're blessed that we have Mike Levitt from the Energy Group and the Budget Committee. He serves on both those roles. And Eric.
Reither.
Reither. So we really have some people that can answer those critical questions or give us the advice we need when it's technically beyond us, because HVAC and that is not my area of expertise.
Yes, it is.
But, you know, we're talking about removing pretty much the remaining asbestos out of the primary school, which would be nice to have that finally completed. Taking out our oil tanks and getting rid of those and moving to propane, which means we'll have a new boiler system in HPS to go along with the heat source air pumps. So we're really setting ourselves up for the next 20 years there. We'll be making changes. If you know the first grade wing, I affectionately refer to them as the fishbowl windows. In, in a lot of cases, those will be going away. But the, if you also know that internally in some of our first grade classrooms, you have the windows that look down to the next classroom. Well, those can't go away because we need that natural light. So we came up with a mechanism today. We're going to put in some really nice cork boards and reduce some of the windows to make it safer for kids. It's always bothered me that about 35 inches off the floor is a whole panel of windows. So they've really come up with some remarkable pieces. Ekman is doing all the work we got in the business and, you know, bringing the numbers in where they need to be. And so we're, we're gearing up at about eight weeks. Just when school gets out, we'll be the first delivery to start construction for this summer. We'll probably be two summers again, because we'll need to be. But we'll get the overwhelming majority of the projects done for what the voters approved. And again, as, as Dick Henry said today, you know, we're pretty much guaranteeing 20 more years of life to these buildings. And again, I've, I've talked about it a lot. Our friends at Amherst need a new school. We get that. You do at some point. But that, that plan came in at $66 million. So, you know, you know, we have other projects. We're looking at a gym floor that will need to be redone and things like that. So there's always going to be projects. It's just like your house. It's never ending. But by doing the wiring, the HVAC, your roofs, you know, you'll have all your big ticket items crossed off for a number of years. And I'll gladly take any, any questions. And I, I do want to take a moment, because Timmy started with H-Steph, and now we're on H-Smart. And it's been an awful lot. So I want to thank her publicly.
Yeah, I would echo that sentiment. Tammy, you've been cornerstone to these major, major projects in this district. And it's really built years and years of service into these buildings for decades to come. So it's been a legacy.
It's easy for you to say, because you dragged me to the very first meeting. And then you said all yours and you.
I don't recall any of that. My recollections differ wildly.
And I'm grateful to you that you gave me an opportunity to learn as much as I've learned.
So it's a good segue, but I'd, I'd like to just ask, if it would please the Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion on encumbrance.
Could we hold that till deliberations? Because we're in the discussion section of our, and I've learned from your mentor that we separate.
Yeah, it's just, I didn't know where in the, because it seems like we're slipping into the deliberation section.
Well, we had made an agenda adjustment that Andy would add it to discussions and we would go into discussions.
Okay, let me know when you're ready to receive that motion.
I've got a note, but thank you. I want to point out something that Andy referred to, if you don't mind. So often we hear from the public, why can't you utilize the expertise that you have all around you in town? Volunteerism, et cetera. And, and I don't deserve a lot of credit. I'm mostly annoying, as you know. Eric Reither and Mike Levitt work for free on these committees. And their contributions just cannot be overstated. They're both, you know, Eric's profession is energy efficiency, smart devices, et cetera. He's literally crawled into the ducting everywhere, with little tiny devices. And he tracks every little blip on his screen. And he has discovered so much savings through just hands-on mucking around. He knows exactly what he's talking about, very high-tech. And all of that, he, he donates to the district, donates his time, comes to all the meetings, most meetings, most weeks. Mike Levitt has been with this project since the beginning, six years ago. Again, retired engineer, knows his stuff inside out. He came up with multiple documents that have just, you know, clarified and supported our budgetary analyses, et cetera, et cetera. I can't say enough about how much they've contributed, you know, as volunteers to the district. And even our contractors very often are working well beyond their billed hours. So I just want you to know we're getting our dollars' worth. And we're, we're really depending on the strength of our community to support and poke around and stress test decisions and planning and that sort of thing. If you have no more comments on H-Smart, we'll move ahead to deliberations. Now you.
Mr. Smith.
Should have, should have just waited the 10 minutes or five minutes.
I'm so sorry. I thought if somebody had more discussion, I wanted to let it go.
So I would like to move to direct the superintendent to encumber the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of replace, procuring and replacing Air Handler III as part of the original plan of our H, was it H-Steph, I guess, or H-Smart?
H-Smart.
H-Smart. I don't, I don't necessarily think that's needed in the motion, but I just wanted to let people know where it's coming from and, you know, what the motivation is here.
I'll second.
Second, Brooke?
So I really appreciate the fact that this district's, we have a history of returning taxpayer money every year to the, to the general fund to offset taxes. I think that establishes and reaffirms trust in the community that we're not just saying, hey, we got a pile of money here. Let's, what do you want to spend it on? We actually have conversations about what makes sense, what we need to do versus what we would like to do. And we do that in a very public fashion. However, this is an important, and I, I look at this with a higher level of standard when we start talking about spending that money that would normally go back. In this case, this is a specific and special case where I just hope community members can appreciate the complexity of doing these type of projects in these windows of opportunity, in the 10 weeks or eight weeks that we have during the summer, and the complexity of procuring and spending monies that we asked for two years ago, yet trying to procure today, and the differences and all that, all that goes into it. I think it's going to be important to get this project completed. And I think we can easily justify why we're doing this, taking this action. And I would strongly ask that the membership also support this motion to get this, encumber these funds, get this done. It's been hanging around for years, this, and Air Handler III, so.
I, I agree with Rob. I also think it's really wise of us to be proactive, because that is a really pricey emergency replacement situation. And I don't want to find the district or the taxpayer in it. So I wholly agree with Rob's motion.
I also want to remind the board that we are funding H-Smart, like we did with H-Steph, with a product called a municipal lease purchase. It's very similar to a bond, except for one really beautiful feature. And that is, we don't pay interest on the loan, except as we spend it. So we're actually earning money on any of this lease funding that we aren't spending. It's sitting somewhere earning teeny tiny amounts, but it's earning as opposed to causing us to spend. So we have a very responsible approach to the funding of this, as well as the mechanical side of it.
Yeah, to your point, bonds are very different. The moment you get the bond is the interest clock begins at that moment. And could you imagine sitting on that money in two years hence to get to the point where you can spend it?
I mean, we are spending as we go on the project, as it, as the pieces come into place. But the pieces we haven't spent, we're not paying interest on.
Nice.
It is a very responsible mechanism. So without further comment, shall we take a vote? All in favor? Oh, excuse me. Before we do this, I beg your pardon. Andy, you had said the number 300,000, but then you talked about the 99 being part of the H-Smart rebate. So are we encumbering 200, or are we encumbering 300?
You're going to encumber 300.
Okay.
And then I'll come back again and give you another update. Because this way, it's, it's, Kelly now has what I'll call an assignment. And then she'll give you the best way. I mean, we are going to use 99 from the rebate. So it's just a matter of where the others come from. And she'll, I will be back again in June. We'll finalize it then. But this way, it really kind of gives her the ability to start looking. Because what happens at this time of year also is we start to scrub each account. And, you know, like maybe the principal thought they were going to buy X. But because of COVID, we didn't have a reason to buy X. So all of a sudden, that money goes back into the general fund. So I feel very confident we'll be able to come back again and give you a clearer picture. But this gives us the, the direction to, to move it forward.
So all in favor? 500, all. Great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good motion, Rob.
Excellent. Our next deliberative, deliberative item are a bunch of policies.
Can I interrupt?
Policies.
Does the board have any problems if we dismiss Bob and Gina?
Do we send home our assistant principal, his district superintendent, Nancy?
Thank you. My family thanks you.
We're on a live mic.
Oh, sorry.
All right, you guys have a lovely evening and thank you for your contributions tonight.
The, the first one is, just for the board, is BCA, which is just Board Code of Ethics. It's a policy that we do on a yearly basis. And it's one of the only policies that we always do by a roll call vote, because each of you are stipulating that you'll abide by that policy, the guide in the Code of Ethics. The second one, I just want to let you know, DFA is our investments annual adoption. We do that yearly. In larger districts, oftentimes, the tax dollars come from the town into the school district, and it's a very large sum of money. And it might be there for months, so they will do investments. We don't typically operate that way. We work closely with the towns. So there's not really a need investment. To Tammy's point, the only investment we have going on is just the money from the lease that's sitting in the, the account, earning a minimal set of interest. But at least it's earning and we're not paying on it because we haven't used it. So those, I just wanted to explain those two, first two policies, that we do those each year.
Very good. So can I have a motion to, a motion on, on, on policy DF, no, sorry, not DFA, BCA, Board Member Code of Ethics?
So moved.
Okay. Need a second? Okay, roll call vote, please. Brooke?
Brooke, aye.
Rob, aye.
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy, aye.
Tammy, aye. Thank you. 500. And our next motion, as Andy said, is policy DFA. Did I have that motion, please?
Second.
And we don't need a roll call on this one. So if I could have, all in favor, sorry. Thank you. 500. And our next policy is EEAA. So I think if we could, Amy, do you mind finishing out your, your policy board work with the, pushing these forward with the motions and then? Excellent.
So I motion to amend policy PPA, video and audio recording on school property by adding reference to policies IJND and JICL, inserting quote by the district and quote at the end of the first sentence under the heading "Video and Audio Recording Authorized" and see the acceptable use agreement. Quote AUA on the SAU41 website for the most current procedures governing personally-owned internet access. As the last sentence. Accept the third reading and adopt as amended.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, thank you.
So based on the comments that we had at the last meeting, we added reference to these other two policies. IJND talks about video and audio recording in school classrooms. And JICL talks about school district internet access for students, which mentions the personally-owned internet devices in school. And we also referenced the acceptable use agreement, AUA, which is on the SAU41 website, which governs all of the procedures around personally-owned internet access in school.
To be a grammar stickler, personally-dash-owned, but other than that, it's fine. The line about AUA.
Yep, okay.
Personally-dash-owned. But I like these changes.
Yeah.
I think they, they mean everything that we discussed. We mentioned by the school district. We mentioned other policies and documents. So I like it.
Do you want further discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed. 500 passes. Thank you very much.
I motion to amend policy IHAMA, teaching by alcohol drugs and alcohol by adding reference to policy ABC in the second paragraph by inserting devices before and the liquid following e-cigarette and by deleting M like bunches following liquid nicotine and to accept the second reading as amended.
So moved.
Second. Whatever it was you needed.
So when we talked about this before, we wanted to make sure. So when we talked about this before, we wanted to make sure that the items that we are referencing in this policy were consistent with policy ADC, which will connect to that point we added into the two items. We also confirmed with Officer Bergeron that these are the terminologies that are used in the DARE program, where this, this curriculum is taught.
What's the reasoning for striking and-like suspensions?
Well, this.
Same thing.
Is consistent with the verbiage in that other policy.
Do we feel that that limits us at all? Meaning if something new came out or whatever?
Well.
That we wouldn't, that it wouldn't be covered by this policy?
I mean, I guess, I guess potentially, you know, but that's, I argue that that's basic almost anything. That's something they could come up with.
Okay.
But we could certainly unstrike it and leave it, leave it down.
No, no. I'm curious what my colleagues feel about on that kind of thing.
I think it's a little subjective, to be honest with you, because I think it's trying to cover all things to everyone. And it could, I tend to think that sometimes it's better to be very specific or direct in terms of the, what we're, with our terminology here. I don't know if and-like suspensions may cause some sort of a challenge and, you know, well, what does that mean? And who makes that determination? And we could spin into a big debate about it. And I just look at situations like this and say, does the, does the phrasing help or hurt the nature of the policy itself? Does it cloudy? Does it make less clarity, or does it add clarity? I don't think it really necessarily adds clarity, in my view.
I'm curious more of a curiosity question, if we want.
Yeah. No, it's a good, I think it's a good question. It's worth, you know, dusting up a little bit.
Well, I mean, if something new comes out and we need to add it to the policy, we revisit the policy.
Always open it up.
This is the second reading, by the way. So perhaps the committee could.
Yes, the committee.
Yes.
I can't hear you, Tammy.
This is the second reading.
Yeah.
Not third and final.
Yeah.
So the committee, Ms. Arthur.
The committee discussed it.
Can take it under advisement that there was discussion around this term, this phrase. Why not?
About, about the like suspensions?
Yes.
Okay. And my question also is, it's interesting, and maybe you already know the answer to this, Amy, and you guys have talked about it. There's so much listed in reference to tobacco, but not other drugs. Like, the tobacco piece is fleshed out so much, and then it just is other drugs.
Because what happened with the tobacco side is that e-cigarettes and Juul and all these other technology delivery mechanisms allowed some people to do an end run around policies that didn't spell out, and that's, I think, what Rob's referencing, didn't spell out specific modes of delivery on the tobacco side.
Yes.
Because they argued that they're not tobacco, that they're only nicotine. But of course, they're tobacco-derived. There are all these court cases out there about it. And I think the policy committee was trying to make it so that, policies everywhere on this topic, even the RSA's on this topic, got that kind of same quality of going on and on about all the different permutations because the industry is trying to avoid being called tobacco.
Okay.
In the next policy, Brooke, because I keep going back and forth, because that was our consistency thing, they dive into a little bit more of the other drug use with the devices and the things.
Got it. Okay. So just bring up the like suspensions and talk through that. Okay.
Yeah, that can be discussed the next committee meeting.
Got it.
Further? So all in favor of the motion to accept as the second reading? 5-0. Thank you. ADC?
Motion to amend policy ADC, Provisions Regarding Use and Possession of Tobacco Product, E-Cigarettes, and E-Liquids in and on school facilities in grounds that capitalize tobacco device, food, and facility, where noted, and in the second paragraph, I am providing all other persons by inserting device before and e-liquid following e-cigarette, and accept as amended.
Second.
So confusing to read like this.
I know they are.
They are.
Carol, thank you for the second discussion.
So this one, we only changed it on this one, which is to capitalize the defined terms for alcohol states.
Sorry. And again, this is the second.
Second on this one.
Reading. So we have an opportunity to see it spelled out one last time. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. 5-0. And FAC?
Was that to, sorry, was that to amend to accept the policy as written, or are we going for a third reading on that?
No, that is just primary.
Just a second. Thank you. Clarify. Thank you.
Motion to amend policy FAC, Rental of Property in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided to the agenda. Further amend by inserting the date of length followed beginning and accept the second reading as amended.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So we attempted to address some of the comments that were made at the last meeting around, you know, date and timing. And the thought at the time was, it might be best to sort of be synced up with the future agreement. So I don't know if we perhaps, I don't know, table this for a time.
Yeah, makes sense.
Or if we accept it for a second reading and then, you know, kind of pause to make sure that we don't approve something here that then, that should really be synced up with the lease.
Yeah, my thinking is maybe tabling is the best approach, because it kind of puts the thing in stasis until we want to come back and address it. I'm just thinking of other alternatives, other than to proceed and then to reopen it and go back through a whole nother reading cycle. Andy, is there any thing you can recommend?
I think you could go to a second reading tonight. And the reason I say that is because our SAU board meeting is the 13th, the Thursday. And I hope that the SAU board will consider putting together a committee to work with Rob that we designated from here. Leave this in second reading. We won't bring it back until September, because the goal would be for the summer to be utilized by Rob and potentially an SAU committee to kind of iron out the details. Then September, October, pass a policy, and then if the board sees fit, move forward with the bond for the SAU facilities. I don't think doing a second reading now will have any bearing on it whatsoever. It keeps it live. It keeps it in its cycle. Dawn will repeatedly remind us of that.
Okay.
And it sets us up nicely to say to the SAU board, we've got a, you know, we've got a kind of framework for policy, and then there may be some discussions that Rob would want to bring to policy over the summer that would, you know, finalize this so we could get a rental type of agreement that the Brookline, the Co-op, and the Hollis boards could all support.
Yeah, probably even having this second reading as something to bring into those discussions would be helpful. So, yeah, I kind of like that idea.
And honestly, nothing prevents this board from having four or five readings. I mean, if things got really unique developments, we can.
Yeah, there's nothing magic about three readings, really.
Of course.
And they don't have to happen in subsequent months, right?
Right.
No.
Correct.
So Sam, do we want to discuss this, or we want to just go ahead and take a vote on the second reading and then let it, okay. So I'll take a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Do you have discussion?
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to make sure no one else did.
Very good. Second reading passes. Thank you. So our last deliberative item here on our agenda, to see what action the board will take regarding the annual authorization of the school board chair to sign on behalf of the board the general assurances of FY 2022.
Correct. In your packet, I provided you a document that comes every year for the last three years. It's relatively new. And basically, what it was intended to do is make all school boards aware that they get federal dollars. So from a compliance standpoint, it's really Kelly, Gina, and I that do all the ins and outs. So by you voting for this, you're not saying that you're necessarily getting to see that or supervise that. You're saying, we're aware of it. We discussed it at a board meeting, because we have to put that in. The chair signs off that it was discussed. And then we do what we always do, which is, you know, revenue and expense accounts and those type of things. And then everything governed by this is covered under the audit every year. So if there was any piece that was out of line, the auditors would bring that. Typically, if there's no issues, the audit goes to just the budget committee. If the audit raises a concern or something, it usually goes to both the budget committee and the school board. That's how we've approached it. So all this is doing is saying that we had a discussion, and what do we get? We get IDEA, which is our special education grant. One of the biggest ones we get is the cafeteria, the food, federal foods program. We get limited Title II money, which is professional development or reduction of class sizes. The ESIR funding, which would have been directly for COVID, is new, but that comes in. And we'll be receiving that, we'll have to spend that by December of 2023. And that can be used for learning loss or things of that nature. But what we typically do is, you know, Gina, when she presents curriculum, or when we worked on staffing for COVID, she would say, okay, that's going to come out of the federal funds from this account to pay for that extra teacher. And that, and the second teacher is going to be covered by this. So it's very prescriptive. We have to file monthly reports with the DOE. It's an online management system. And the way the process works is it comes through, and depending on which grant it is, either Amy, Bob, Kelly, Gina, or I is supervising that. And ultimately, I click the button that says we move forward. It comes back, and it says, ready for a superintendent's signature, so I have to proof it. And then I send it forward. So it's a very strong system. I think this was enacted because some boards weren't having discussions around their federal dollars. So I do think this is a nice mechanism to at least force that discussion. So in the next couple of days, if you pass this, I'll invite Tammy over. We'll both initial it. And then we'll both sign off and send it off to the state. It gets filed electronically.
And this is customary, that this district has done this in the past, bestowed the chair these powers?
Correct. And it's not necessarily the powers. The chair is recognizing that the board met the requirement, that they discussed it at a meeting, and they were made aware of the policies.
Okay.
Further? So if someone could read off the motion and get a second?
Motion to authorize the board chairman to represent the school board in knowledge of the superintendent has consulted all members of the school board in furtherance of the school board's obligations, including those enumerated in RSA 91:1-A, and per se which the school board oversight the federal funds that will be receiving, and of the general assurances, requirements, and definitions of our communication and set of federal appropriations.
Second.
If there is not further discussion, all in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you. Passes. Our agenda says we have a non-public?
We have a second non-public.
We have a second non-public. And this one is RSA 91-A:3, Roman numeral 2, parentheses A, on compensation and/or reputation administrative compensation discussion.
Second.
So.
So we just need a roll call vote.
Yeah, we need a roll call vote.
Brooke, aye.
Rob, aye.
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay, Rich, you can shut us down.